She's already brought in a site map once.
Why don't we sit?
I'm just planning on leaving it on the screen because that's going to be the majority.
That's probably a good idea.
Down, lie down. Down.
All right, we're online talking about a workshop regarding the town's forthcoming new website. And Audra, I guess I'll let you take the lead in how to approach this and from a site map perspective.
This isn't going to work for me with the student. Can I sit up here to the better?
Of course, of course.
Anywhere you want.
Yeah, anywhere you want.
What's that?
Anywhere you want.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We'll see how she does. She might give more.
Go ahead, Audra.
All right, so in regards to the new website, we are at a stage where we need to finalize the site map, which really organizes the content of the site and how it's presented. So it's really a pretty critical junction to get some feedback on what everybody would like to see and how they would like to see it presented. We have a draft of the proposed site map up here, which is going to be broadcast on the screen. So everybody will be able to see it at home as we're going through and talking about what's proposed. Just to give everybody an idea of, you know, where this content will be placed, I've got the mock-up of the homepage. So when we talk about sort of the top navigation bars or the top navigation sort of areas, you've got the government, departments, residents, businesses, how do I contact us? And that can all be seen on this side navigation menu right here. So that's kind of what we're looking at is this menu and then the, how it flies out and what comes next from it. So I'm going to just scroll down so everybody can see what's being proposed. So one thing, and I think it's probably good to go over the homepage in a little bit of detail. So we were really focused on making sure that this was a highly functional website and all of the space on the homepage was really maximized by information and content that had a practical purpose. So, you know, in the sort of image up there, we wanted to make sure there was a search function. We got a lot of feedback that the town calendar was really important to everyone. It's very prominent on the current website. The only time when you can't see the calendar on the homepage of the website is typically during elections when there's a lot of information and content that we have to put on the homepage. But there's going to be another solution for that on this website, on this new website, moving forward. But everybody, you know, really liked the fact that the town calendar is prominent on our current website. So we wanted to maintain that on the new one. Town news, I think that's going to be an opportunity to use this more to sort of punch out more important updates. And that's where we'll be able to put a lot of stuff about, you know, linking to town meeting or, you know, if there's a project that we want to draw everybody's attention to. I think, you know, when the brown-tailed moth stuff came up in the fall, that's a good example of something.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Punch out information about.
Would you put your manager's report there?
Yeah, I'll put my report there.
Audra, how will I know to scroll down to see the latest town news? It appears that the calendar fit would fill my screen on my laptop. How do I know to scroll down? Will there be something that says latest town news and an arrow or something? Because I might not scroll down and I might miss that.
Yeah, they'll always be an arrow directing you to go down until you've reached the bottom of the page.
Can you go back up to the top to see what the, because that's an issue I've had before too, going to other websites, not realizing.
Is there?
How does it, because we're looking at the mock-up right now, which makes it hard to know. Let's go to the Rockland website.
Revise too?
Go to the Rockland website.
Yeah, we can go to Rockland.
It might just be a matter of putting something really prominent right there that says keep scrolling.
Latest town news, scroll for latest town news.
Have home and when you hit it, it has three sub-screens. It says latest news.
We do have that on the side, but, because it depends, you know, sometimes you're going for a specific reason and sometimes you're just going to browse. That's why it starts off with this really clear thing saying, you know, so you can search for what you're looking for. I think the Rockland one does kind of make it apparent that there's something down there to scroll, but you can just go over to the side and.
Doesn't say latest town news over to the left.
So you think that's important enough to be its own, that's what we have to figure out is what.
Well, if you want people to see it, you have to make it easy for them to find it. That's, and I'm going to say since you're live now, I think that the, I know you didn't want to do this, Audra, but the font size over on the left side.
Maybe keep your microphone a little closer.
Where it says home, government, business, residence. I think that font needs to be a little bit larger or bolder because.
Or both, yeah.
When I looked at the screen, it was really kind of small.
Yep.
You have to realize our.
That's kind of ADA compliant too, if you make it bigger.
I know that's not where you want to go today.
No, no, I don't think that, I think that's exactly where we want to, I think we want to do whatever pops out at you. I'm trying, I'm going to try to get a few more people watching this possibly.
This is kind of one that might give us a good idea of.
Explore more.
So yeah, that's the function that we can't see because it's just a mock-up that they'll have on the actual.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
See, it goes right to latest city news.
So, yeah, I mean, because the thing is, if we want people to see things, we have to make it easy to see. But then it's what do you want people to see since there are so many? You know, I just want to register my dog, you know, and all I keep seeing is the latest city news or. Are we going to be able to? Did we, oh, there's the banner thing at the top.
What?
Didn't we try to make that more, is that the result of after we asked if it could be more? Prominent, because sometimes we really want something just to pop up and be. I mean, that's got, that's going to be.
Is that just like blah, 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 blah up there? Announcement, blah, 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 okay.
Now, did we get a good, what I haven't understood so far is how much we can change later? Because the whole reason that we chose this company was so that we'd have a lot of flexibility. And I was expecting that that would mean that somebody with a reasonable skill level that had been trained could go in and change the design of that pop-up banner or could go in later and say, I want to change even the font of the menu. That's, it shouldn't, how much is, you know, even, you know, the site map? When we want to start sub-menus and all that stuff, how much? We keep saying we need to finalize it, but I really hope that's not true that.
I think it's finalizing for content migration purposes. Like they were very clear that we could add and take away pages.
And what about changing, if we want to add in later a pop-up or something? Say the town decides one day to do a survey and we want something to pop up. We should be able to do that without.
I think that's going to be an issue. I think it's more of just like, it's like the fundamental layout of the, oops. Oh, that's much easier. The fundamental layout of the homepage and the internal pages. And then the, yeah, the site map itself, because you need sort of like a basis to add new things and take old things away. So I think it's more of that that they're talking about right now.
I think Deb's definitely right about the font on the side.
It's very tiny.
And, I mean, all of it. The. Maybe the, even after your search here. As long as you already wrote that down, then we can move on.
I can.
I can, I can just hear my dad saying, I can't see it. Where have I got?
A lot of people can, that's why, but I would assume our entity knows to brush this thing for ADA type stuff for the hearing appeared.
Right.
And that's, they should, they know that.
Right, Audra? They know that.
Oh yeah, that was a requirement of the RF.
I don't think we've gotten to that stage yet, but I think the combat is correct. But right now the font, I think it's way too small, but that's, I think the site map is where we should probably be focusing for content.
I like the fact that all that stuff is written in Latin right now, so.
You want to keep it that way?
So yeah, it's really pretty, pretty simple. So the search function, the calendar, news, and then just like a little blurb.
I like that a lot.
And the link to get in touch.
And I agree, calendar is essential for when people know what's going on.
Better than before, right? Remember?
No, I.
Result of everybody's comments.
This is a huge improvement.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Site map.
And I guess just to give you an idea of how the menu is going to function, we kind of liked it because it's, everyone's kind of familiar with that left-hand menu. And so it'll be.
I see.
Kind of like this.
Nice.
I see.
And it's pretty standard for.
It is.
What they're doing is a lot of stuff like this.
I like it from the side better.
And everybody's here, you know, they're familiar with the side, so it's not as big a change all at once. So, anyway, to get back to the site map stuff.
So as it stands now, does every page on the old website have a page on the new website? Or did we go in and?
Well, it's supposed to. We're supposed to migrate all of that information from the old one to the, to the new one.
In the same. In the same structure? The same structure that we thought before wasn't maybe the best?
No, so it would, it would go in this structure that we're talking about right now.
And so this was done, I guess, yeah, I haven't memorized the old website, so.
So what they did was they basically, they looked at our current website and the site map for that and then looked at sort of this fundamental structure with the, you know, government, departments, residents, businesses, how do I, all of that, and organized our old pages under those to the best of their ability and sent me a draft of it. And then I kind of went through and made some recommended changes. And then this is the result.
Okay. So select board and then you have boards and committees.
Ordinance.
So if you clicked on, can you, if you clicked on select board now, Audra, where you are, and it would show then, I can show you exactly which page on our current website will pop up.
Oh, I see. So that same level of information in probably a different format will be available on the new website, correct?
Yes.
We would want to make sure that a lot of, I think that a lot of the information is available in multiple places. So if you get to here, it's frustrating because on that select board thing, it was like, seemed like more an overview of what a select board is. And that should also take you, that's fine, but it should also take you to the, all the, you know, select board minutes, select board agendas, select board members.
So that's the inside if you go to.
But that page two should have it, so.
You don't have to keep going to look for.
Right, like, because sometimes what happens is like.
Everything with select board should be on the select board page.
But I can, I see that, because also there'll be, there's no way that every, you can teach everybody to follow the exact same path, like they'll not, they won't always be thinking select board is the way to get to the, like, most recent meeting minutes or something. They might search for minutes or the new select board members or.
So I think.
It's, sometimes multiple pathways have to be able to take you.
So this is going to be beyond kind of just the migration? It's going to be the reorganizing of information within the website once they've structured everything? And that's really a content thing and that's really for us to do? If that makes any sense.
So you're saying focus on the site map as it is, then the next step will be the migration of information?
Well, no, this is all, this is all good because we've got to know that, but it is, it is the next step. But it's good that we know this now because this helps us set everything up.
Sure. On the select board page, are we repeating the municipal calendar?
Yes.
Can you go back to just like the right, the select board page that comes up now when you're, we're.
I'm sorry. You mean when I clicked on that particular?
Yeah.
Because I see a big problem now that we have as sometimes if you. So you have a menu item that comes like a header menu item. And if you then drop down sub-menus. And so it took me a long time to learn the trick to finding select word packets. And somebody like an insider had to show me. And the problem was, and I don't know if that still exists today, but that there was, something was available on a sub-menu, but not everybody knows to like hover and then wait for the sub-menu. So they'll just click on the, on the overall big menu item and then you should always have, if you just click on that major item, that should also take you to the, whatever the three dropdown menu items were. We should be able to get to it like that too.
I would agree because that's what's difficult about the navigation today, I believe.
Yeah.
Is that you don't, I mean, I go, well, that's not enough information about the select.
Right.
I want to be able to go from there. I don't need to know that. I want to know what the agenda is.
Or last week's minutes or, so it should take you there in multiple, that there, you can't, a sub-menu isn't a substitute for having those, a way to get there from the.
Yeah.
Top menu item, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
Saying that that's, see, I see that as a.
That's kind of all the stuff that.
I mean, we certainly just have to add in links later, but. I mean, it is about what the content is on that.
Yeah, it's, this is a one we could do either way, really. We might as well address it now, you know?
Yeah. I think so.
I think it's good you're not duplicating town manager and select board on the new section. Because you've got select board, select board packets and information, and then town manager and select board. And then I think that's how you get to committees. And so it's good you're not repeating that. I hope you're not repeating that. Because that's really a duplicate thing on the left-hand side now, town manager and select board. That's how we get to committees, I think, today.
It's confusing because like one of them takes you to who they are, you know? And one of them takes you to what they, what's been going on and.
I think committees should have their own.
They do.
Heading.
Have they had their own page now?
They do. It's on the site map. It has its own set, boards and committees are separate. You can see from down below with the other, the other second box. They have their own grouping.
I got it. So committee membership list will be everybody, but I could keep going. And when I click on Camden Charter Commission, I would come up with any minutes we have or any of the information that we currently have on the Charter Commission page. Is that correct?
Um, here, let's get Nancy up, a microphone.
Okay, here Nancy.
We could share.
Okay.
Maybe, I'm sorry I'm late, but it says, we have adopted the town meeting select men. That should say select board, not select men.
Yeah, right now, we're working on the overall structure.
Right, but I just.
And then later we're going to go in and.
But right now, you know, is that going to be printed out somewhere so that people can actually look at it and offer edits?
To the new website?
Are you going to print out some of it?
Print out every page of the website, but it would be great if, if, I mean, having somebody take the time like you to point out those things is, is a valuable contribution.
I would, I would do the overview.
Yeah.
I'll do the overview if somebody will just print off what's there now. I'll edit that. I mean, it would take me a minute.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I'm just trying to think because we have so many pages, but Audra, maybe.
Is that exact language going in the website?
Well, at this point, we don't have, we haven't gotten to the point of editing actual language. We're just setting up the pages, but.
Yeah, that should come as the next step, I would think.
But I want to make sure that there's something, we minus, when we're copying and pasting if.
We can do, what could be done is, for example, every time it's saying something like select men, you want that out, you want select board. Every time it says manager, you want it to stay instead town manager. So it's just consistent all the way through.
We can, we can certainly do a, like, find and replace function when we're, when we're migrating all the content for things that are known issues like select men and select board.
Yep.
And then I think we could print a lot. We're trying to find a way that somebody could edit, like that Nancy, if she wanted to go through and edit some of the things.
Sure.
Printing some of the pages is.
Yeah, I'll ask if they, like, maybe they can send them through in. You know, a format where we can.
What their recommendation is for editing, like.
Yeah, we could check that out. Back to the first piece, which is select board, site map. Is everybody kind of on board with those two? It says, what does it say, agendas and minutes? Is this where packets are going to go?
Yes.
There are agendas and minutes?
Yeah, see, there's this little note saying agendas, packets, minutes, contained in single.
I need a magnifying glass.
Agenda list page template.
Got it. Okay, is there anything else we're missing in the select board site map?
What does agenda list mean? Oh, agenda list, okay. Evangelist.
I think, yeah, I think that this is going to be.
I get it.
Because I don't know where the, where is it? Is it this one?
I can never find the packets on the episode.
The only other, other edit thing I'd mentioned would be anytime there's an acronym like CDAC, and that's what we're all used to calling it here. So in parentheses afterward, it should say what it is. Because anybody who wants to access that who's new would have no idea what they do.
Yeah, you're right.
So, yeah. I mean, just always acronym and then parentheses, what, spell it out.
All right.
So, yeah, the packets on the current, oh, see, Janice fixed that a while ago, the select word packet slash information.
Yeah.
The solution normally has just been to start a new.
Start a new tab on the sidebar.
So staying on the government tab, next would be boards and committees.
Then on the inside.
Yep, there it is.
It's a waste of page. See, and then now how, now you want to, well, okay, I've read that one sentence, a waste of the page. And then get me back to where I want to go to the list. So this is where you talked about more links being on that page.
It should be right, there should be a whole list that, you know.
To each committee's page on this page.
And a description, just a short description of what each committee is or does.
I have a question. When you put the phone number in there, just a generic phone number, people are not going to know who to ask for?
Oh, well.
You're going to get all of a sudden that big, who do we, who do I talk to when I dial 3353? Who are they going to ask? Did you get the auto?
Oh, well, you don't know which menu item to shoot, which option to choose.
But you don't, you know, it could possibly be Janice's extension?
Doesn't always go to Janice, you call Janice's extension.
What, who else does it go to if you call Janice's extension? Well, that would be okay. We choose to forward it, but that would be okay.
Nobody answers and you get her voicemail. I know, but if somebody picks up.
And that's okay. Jeanie also would know what to do with a committee interest form.
Purposely do that when they're gone.
Right. But it should be Janice's extension probably, so that it goes.
Button to hit when they get the phone menu.
Well, they have no idea what.
As we never change our phone system, we should avoid as many things as. I mean, you just have to, I mean, calling the town office is. I mean.
You need to know who to ask for, what to ask for, because you have all those menu items and none of them say anything about it. You don't know who to ask for. You're just going to, I don't know who to ask for. You should put Janice's extension in that particular thing because that's the person you want to.
Or instead of doing that, we could just have it like, it's an online form and you submit it.
So you just, you don't want to direct people into sort of a trap of, we don't know what's going on.
I mean, what happens now when you just call the town office and, for general information? People do it all the time. They call and.
If, if you get somebody, you always get somebody.
Right, I know. It is, I don't think our, our menu structure is necessarily perfect, but.
That's something we can work on.
Now, when we press on this for committees, this is going to be, we're going to see a list of committees' names or we're going to see.
And it's really outdated. Click on it.
Oh, this, this right here.
That's just the form, right?
Cheesy, peasy.
And then you're like, okay, can I find any minutes for any of these things? I've tried to find ZBA minutes. I don't think those exist, but, but it's hard to tell if you just haven't gotten to the right place or you haven't.
So, do we want to do an example?
So can you do me a favor with your help? Okay, that's great. Now, okay.
Oh.
Oh, out of date.
Can't wait to catch up. 19, would you click on 19, 2019?
Some light.
Oh, see, that's where.
One person caught up, one didn't.
By planning board.
So are they all going to kind of look like that?
It's a fun game, isn't it?
It is a fun game. And then write Jeremy an email when you're done.
Okay. Click on charter, if you would, for me. Just indulge me. Click on the Camden Charter Commission and see what pops up. Okay.
Oh, that's one of the nicest ones we have.
That's good.
You're first, so that's the.
Wow.
It's alphabetical.
An example for all to follow.
Look at all that content.
Not alphabetical though.
Should be alphabetically.
I even have.
It should be before me, right? Alphabetize on the voter list. Are you under C or J?
C, should be C.
You're under C.
Yeah, I'm under C, but I mean, that should be alphabetized.
I thought it was at first, but it's not.
Yeah, yeah, it should be alphabetized.
I think it's by a point, yeah.
Or alphabetically according to height.
I mean, that, you know.
It would be nice.
Onward.
I have no comment on that.
Move on, it's okay.
Depending on the amount of staff time it takes.
You know, another thing I think would be good for all of the committee pages and all the select board pages, a link to the YouTube channel.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Eventually, once we have lots of time, we can even have playlists for different committees and. You notice that YouTube has started to.
Established, da-da-da, expires, whatever that is. That would be useful.
Because the other, the other committee did have the term expirations. Our term doesn't expire till we finish our job.
Good point. Good point. But there are committees that individuals do have tenures documented and we could, we could add that if you wanted to, I suppose.
Well, that is on here, but.
That'd be, I'm always cautious with websites is how much maintenance is involved. Manpower maintenance costs money. If it isn't essential, don't do it.
Charter Commission email. That's a, Nancy raised an interesting point. Let's say somebody had a question for Charter Commission or one of the other committees. How would they contact that committee? Because there's not.
I've gotten that, I forgot about that. I've had a couple really annoyed people actually.
Like an email, I mean, whether there's email, I mean, you don't want to.
Subject the chairman.
You don't want to subject the chairman to get, having personal, their personal email up there. I don't know how you do it.
So an email address for each committee and then it, good, it goes to the chairman in a private.
The way we've always done it before is we've just had personal email addresses. And those, as part of the training, those emails are, you know, it's the honor system with, when you're on a committee and if you get a. those emails are, you know, it's the honor system with, when you're on a committee, and if you get a request saying please forward all of your, but that happens now all the time, you know, the pathways committee, the, it's once in a while I get included in one of those, and I'm like, oh my gosh, they are.
They used, they used to be on there, actually. I remember emails used to be on the list, did they not?
I don't know.
We, no.
Is this a part of, is this, is there a history to this? Like, we decided a long time ago to take them away?
Somebody got upset because there was a, you know, an email sent out with everybody else's emails, and theirs was in it, and they got mad, so.
I really feel like when you sign up for a town committee, you do agree to make yourself.
Yeah, you're kind of, yes.
I think chairs and co-chairs.
Yeah.
And maybe that ought to be on a forum, I mean, when you go in and you sign up.
I would agree.
Whatever, then you put it on the form that you agree, it shouldn't be just understood, it's either something you, and if you're elected chair of a committee.
Yeah, it's already, it's already exposed, because we, I sent out a email as a chair of a committee, and I oftentimes copied interested parties who attended the meeting. My email address is there, it's already exposed, so it's.
Do you guys have government, you guys have government emails?
Well, that's, yeah, but I'm.
I was on the, I was on the conservation commission before, and, but I do like the idea of it being the chair, you know, the chairs, because then we should encourage most of just random public communication to a committee.
To go through the chair.
Not just, I think I know that person the best, or it is best.
So if I'm, if I'm just anybody who wants to make a comment about a commission, I then can't go on the website and send an email, say, to the town of Camden, care of this committee.
Oh, you could.
We can do that.
That's not a way of doing it.
So that would be my idea, is that people should be able to send an email, and you say on there, if you want to reach the committee, you send an email to the town of Camden at this email, and care of, to this committee.
Perfect.
That way, all the emails for that committee go into one box, the chair or somebody gets designated to come in and get them, and then at the next meeting, any citizen who has a comment, their comments get raised during the meeting.
And I like, I like the fact that it's, that would then be going to a central location, and it's all going to the town of, town of Camden.
People don't feel constrained because they're reaching a certain chair or co-chair, and they aren't hanging around with old email addresses. We have no conservation commission, I don't think, at the moment, et cetera.
It also keeps somebody who might not be as good about their emails, if they're a chair or vice chair, from not looking at their emails, or the thing that doesn't get directed.
Right, it changes as soon as.
I think she's got a point.
Everything stays to public record. There will never be a question about public record as long as it's directed to the town.
Yeah, because I could choose not to read an email to the.
Right.
Design team. If I didn't like the email, I could choose to forget about it.
Well, or forget.
Well, then they would have, they would have chosen, made a bad choice for chair, I think, and just hopefully that will sort itself out.
That's what I mean, you could.
Right. I don't think we're gonna be able to stop all of the committee emails. They're just gonna continue doing what they do. But for the new person that's just trying to find, like, you know, whatever, I think.
I agree, that's fine. Back to the, back to the site map again, so it's a committees thing we kind of discussed, I think. Ordinances and policies, this would just be a data dump of all the ordinances and policies in town?
It'll look like this.
Okay.
Um, is the search function?
Yeah, that's when my question is.
I'm hoping, I don't, you know, I don't know for certain. One, one thing that we did talk about, though.
Yeah.
This is, I mean, I'm sure Revis has a solution, but there are other software solutions. The code, the zoning ordinance, or just all the ordinances.
Right, we're just putting it into Ecode.
We should have a code of ordinances. We shouldn't have, like, all of these loose, separate ordinances floating around. And the, the way to, to do that that would work best, instead of organizing them in a document and scanning them in, this big massive PDF that we have to keep updating and remembering what's where, is to get a piece of software that does it for us. And I think Revis would probably have a product like that, and there's one called General Code that, like, you know, Belfast uses it, I'll show.
I thought it was Ecode three sixty or something.
Ecode three sixty is another one, but it's not the same.
That's what most towns and cities do now, they don't have a list of their own ordinances, they have.
So that would negate the need for.
Right, so this, this would.
Yeah, but we're, the reality is we're not gonna do it right away.
Well, you could.
I mean, I'm, I support doing it.
To Ecode as you, as you, as we can.
You can do step one and step two, but it, it, step two would be to have the reference to the, link to the software, and it would have all that data in it.
Right, but, but realistically.
We wouldn't have it right away.
Not that I'm in any way opposed to moving forward with something like that right away. I kind of doubt we're gonna do it right away. And so we should still try to make it navigable.
I don't think that works until you get something like Ecode.
I think so too, I just, with the search, with the, a lot of.
Yeah, that's.
This is relying on the search function. It would be nice if you could.
Yeah, that's.
Have a, have a search function that works right within that, that would, that would only search a subset of documents.
I mean.
How is our search?
I don't know anything about, you know, like, the software basis for their search function and what, I mean, actually, we could look at.
But could we ask to be able to limit searches to, look at a different one? I really want there to be a preview in the search results, so that now if you search, because now if you search for something on the town. Okay. What is, is this one of the revised websites?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, table of contents.
Just send them all of our documents and say, can you create a table of contents?
Mm-hmm, good luck. Because the current list we have doesn't include, already doesn't include everything.
Yeah, this is kind of what it'll look like, I would imagine.
Is there an advanced search option? Did you go back, is that the search results or the?
These are the results, yeah.
Yeah, because you just put in ordinances.
So.
Hold on, oh, that.
Put in zoning.
Okay. No, can we ask them if there's a, if they have a.
Here we go, look.
Yeah, but. Can we ask them if they have a more advanced search function, so that you can, like, limit searches by date, by?
You can, you can search for anything you want and limit anything you want. You just have to probe, you have to, you have to.
Right, if you can't limit the results, then you can't limit the results.
Right.
And you get.
Real list.
Like when you're searching on a library card catalog system, or anything, you can, you can, you know, search for images, search for books that are here, search for books that are not here, or search for, they should be able to say, search only with.
Is, is that difficult to do on a website?
I don't know.
I have no idea.
It all depends on whether.
Depends on their software.
Right.
They love, they told us they love to solve these types of problems, and a lot of the time they already have.
What I'm wondering is, like, what's going to be, like, the order of magnitude more useful and more, you know, focusing on, like, them building a proprietary search function that works really well, or us doing, like, some sort of code?
It just may be that they can, they have it all ready to go. Oh, you want the advanced search option? Then you just click advanced.
So this is, this is Ecode.
So they might have something like this already as well, and we just need to pick what, what we want.
I would go here.
I don't know if they do or not.
Right, we should ask Revis, though, because this will cost us money, and revise things that they already have, it's, it's free, so.
Okay.
Free, you know.
I, I would just think, however, you would like to do something that's fairly standard, that's used throughout a lot of municipalities, such as Ecode. I mean, I don't, would be nice to get a quote from Ecode to find out how much it costs to do it. But so many municipalities use that system, they're.
They do. Everybody does.
Standardized.
Almost everybody uses the Ecode.
I, that's, that's a pretty big exaggeration, I would say.
I, I don't know, I.
There are many standard.
Tons of our size, not so much, but, yeah, I'm not, Ecode isn't my favorite, but whatever anybody else wants to do is fine. But Revis does a lot of websites and.
I'm wondering if they have something like this already. It would surprise me if they didn't. I mean, when you say the same.
Makes sense, it's what, this is what they do.
Yeah.
Let's find out.
So I can ask about, I can ask about both those things and see what, what's gonna cost money, what is in, what we, and what we think is more useful.
Good. With the ordinances in this packet, I saw the term policies, where, where, what policies are we putting in here?
Oh, those are supposed to be secret.
Excellent question.
Brought out when useful.
Town policies and bylaws.
So we were, Jody found, she was looking through a town report for, from nineteen eighty-nine, to try to figure out when the Snow Bowl became an enterprise fund, and who gave the authority for that to happen. And while she was going through it, she stumbled across an old policy that she was going to bring before the select board to approve. And then she was reading through the town meeting, she was like, oh, that's already, that was approved in nineteen eighty-nine.
A town meeting?
Well, what, what was it?
Word policy?
No, it was like a, it was like a policy on, it was a sub-financial thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, some pretty detailed financial thing.
It's amazing what's already out there when you.
So, I guess my point being, we have all of these, sorry, it wasn't approved at a town meeting, it was a select board meeting.
Right, like when Jan, when I'm like, we shouldn't let people smoke right in front of our building, and Janice is like, emails a policy.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff like that.
Even Beth at Mikrosol Oasis tried hard to, to, in our, in our binders in the beginning of the year, she tries to be, print off policies that boards have already agreed to.
So back to my question, what do we intend to put in here?
I mean, it says town policies and bylaws, is there something there?
It's as many, I think, as Janice could find.
Oh.
There's some. There's nowhere near a complete list, though.
What do you, what else do you think is missing?
Uh.
All kinds of little things.
Yeah, we, we, actually, we, I'm trying to remember the one we created last year, that was, I don't remember the name of it. What was it, what was it? We created one last year.
Does the committee staff, would that be a policy? Kind of.
This is kind of, it's.
About filming and.
It's, it's, it's called a criterion, you know, but, but it should be there. My point is, if we have, the question is, if we have policies, they should all be in here.
Yes.
Okay, that's.
What are the committee directives?
This is, this is everything that'll get migrated over, but we can't do it.
It's missing, it's missing. It should be here.
Should that be under each committee, the committee directive?
Well, the committee directive.
Oh, the, no, that's not what I'm talking about, the committee directive, are you talking about work plans?
No, not, well, work plans could go up on their page, but, but every committee has a description of their purpose.
That's what I, that's, that's nowhere anywhere to be found. You have to just get it. I agree totally, under the.
Page.
Yeah.
And on the list of the whole, all the committees that you can click on and.
That's a one hundred percent like content thing.
Was referring to as a committee guidelines.
Like the stuff about you're subject to freedom of information and all that.
Right, right.
What's, what does it say under leaf policy pickup?
That we don't do it.
Yeah, there you go.
That's, you know, should be revisited at some point.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're, we're agreeing that all the.
We get a lot of information together on why it's a bad idea.
Right, right. Okay, so all the policies will be in this, in this tab, and the ordinances, okay, good, clear. Next site map issue.
Can you back up one screen to where you listed the zoning, you know, like the comprehensive plan and all of that?
Oh, where did I?
Just before this one?
This one.
Okay, so on that, you want to take out Camden, remove that, because you're talking about zoning ordinance, charter, police ordinance, emergency operations plan, et cetera. Either you can put Camden in front of each of those names, or not at all.
Plus you have zoning on there twice.
Then they should be alphabetized, so people can find them easily.
And zoning's twice up there.
It is.
Yeah, Camden zoning ordinance and zoning ordinance.
So it'd be the zoning ordinance, because obviously it's a given that it's the town of Camden.
And maybe organize a little bit, like, under, with ordinances altogether, charter, ordinances.
And, and the fonts.
Things that relate to zoning could go near each other.
I think alphabetizing, though, makes it simpler, doesn't it?
No.
With codification, which, which is an open question right at the moment.
Emergency management plan, how is that more related to, I think, like, comprehensive plan and town charter?
Charter should start at the top. Yeah, that's a good point, prioritize them.
Yeah, I mean, kind of, that's, it's like you've got the constitution, then you have the laws, and then the.
Usually said town of Camden charter is what that would say.
Yeah.
The rest of them would be ordinances that wouldn't have Camden.
Well, this.
You might have it for the Camden comprehensive plan, otherwise.
Right, this whole page is, I mean, the ordinances down below, under miscellaneous ordinances, this brings me back to the need for potential codification, because in there is the, the policy, the whole bunch of pol, I'm sorry, ordinances listed down there.
I'd say the vast majority of our ordinances are in that.
That's correct, and it's like this batch of above of fifteen or so is more important than the other ones. I don't agree, it should be codified. All of them should be.
Everybody agrees with that, Bob, but we just don't know when it's gonna happen.
Okay, that's.
I mean, I think everybody does agree with that.
Fair comment, fair comment.
We talked about it months ago, and everybody agreed then too.
Well, I guess then, then now, shouldn't the list of ordinances be a list of all of them? Just a list?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, there's a fifteen.
Have things in here that are not even ordinances.
Well, it says click here for these ordinances, and down below it says miscellaneous ordinances, like clean community, why can't I click for that?
Because then you'd have to have a different document. I don't personally like to have to search in many different documents. I like to be able to search for the word trash can and see how many places it appears in the town ordinances, but.
As long as I'm, as long as I'm resident.
Yeah, we should have it codified, but.
No, I don't care about codification, I'm just saying, just the, the ability to be able to get to the clean community ordinance. I want to be able to get to it, and I can't do it right now.
What happens when you click on miscellaneous?
Click on miscellaneous ordinances.
It was actually in the police ordinance. A little confusing to me.
Exactly.
Because we did put it in the police ordinance. We don't actually have.
Yeah. Oh, I signed it. Uh-oh, blame, blame Katrina.
Or does it say, which one's clean community in there?
I can't find it.
It's in the police ordinance, I promise you.
I think you're right.
We, that's what we were gonna, because the police department's supposed to force it. Didn't, we were supposed to put the styrofoam ord, all of that stuff was supposed to go in the police ordinance.
I think you're right.
But the styrofoam was in the miscellaneous.
And that's.
But they're not listed.
Bottom line is, let's fix it, so it's clear.
Kelly, I don't know, I don't remember.
Supposed to have miscellaneous ordinances, I think. I thought it, either was a zoning ordinance or a police ordinance.
Well, that.
We should have a code of ordinances, and this would be a moot point.
This, this, this.
We'll have to organize it no matter what. Even in a code, it's gonna have to be organized, so.
Absolutely, but it's not, like, everything now just gets stuck under police or miscellaneous, and it really shouldn't.
Well, but this.
What is it gonna go under? What is miscellaneous?
In the code of ordinances that we orig, that was originally started, like, back in the nineties or eighties and abandoned, there was like a solid waste section in that code of ordinances, so, you know, you.
It was under police.
What's that? No, it wasn't under police. Like, that was its own section within the code.
I would love that.
I know you would. There's a lot of good stuff.
But I, it's gonna take time.
Yes.
And, and a lot of the discussions are gonna be the same as the discussions that we would have right now over how to organize them on a, on a page. It's gonna be a lot of the same discussion, so if we make progress on organizing them on a page on the town website, we will also be making progress on. Is it, clean community is in there?
It says town of Camden Police Ordinance, chapter eight.
It is, but it's, I'm.
It's at the very bottom.
Clean is not on it.
No, it is.
It is, I didn't see it.
Yeah, see at the bottom?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see it, yep, yep, yep. Yeah, because, that's right, that was just done this, this year. Yep. Okay, but anyhow, I just, you got, I think you got the issue, whatever way we go, just as long as people can get to them and be able to click on and find them.
Right, but I think while we're doing this, we could make things slightly better, in the, as we're waiting for, you know, to reach.
Okay, sure.
Utopia or whatever.
Makes sense, one step at a time.
I'm sorry, Nancy, as she was leaving, said that she volunteers to help edit any, any of this.
Oh, wonderful.
You can do to make that accessible for her, she's really good at that.
She is, she's very, very good at that.
She doesn't have her computer to print those things out herself, but anyway, if there's any kind of way to help make that happen, she can take care of all of it.
Great, thank you, Deb.
Should try to make that happen.
Thanks, Deb.
Well, I, there's gotta be a better way.
Aye.
I bet the site map, like, it's all in a, in a Excel thing, kind of, in some ways, and the, the general text.
There's gotta be like a simple.
We can probably export all the.
That's what I was thinking.
So, on.
Might now, there are days.
Probably does.
So the next major projects is intended to be the things that are going on with Tannery, Sagamore Farm, whatever, the list of townwide projects?
Yes.
Hot button issues, we could have a.
But, I mean, that's a great, we have it all split all over the place now, and it should be. be in one place. I agree. You have them listed there. Yeah, Riverwalk, Public Landing, why they're one tab, I don't know. But, yeah, so any reports...
Major projects. That's loaded a little bit, and then it's going to be scary to put things there.
What do we want to call it?
Miscellaneous projects. No, I'm joking.
See, I guess major...
Projects.
Major because we... Well, major because you don't want to put a single project up there. I'm exaggerating, of course, but major projects would be what we're doing with dams.
I know, but major projects sounds... Maybe town projects.
All right.
Town...
All right, that's fine. Call whatever. Yeah, town project's fine. And that's a great place to put all this information, including reports, including all the information people might want to see about any given issue with the Riverwalk or...
Initiatives or something. I don't know.
Sure, whatever you... Whatever, whatever, you know. I like initiatives. Yeah. That's great. Town... What's that?
I wrote town initiatives and projects.
Oh, I see. You want to get it all right, huh? Town initiatives. Cool. And then, the town meeting tab... Oh, do you have any questions on that? The town meeting tab would be about...
I really want to sort of pack this out with more information.
Which one?
Because it's such an important part of how we run our town.
Oh, I see.
And I don't think we give it enough, sort of, prominence.
Explanation.
And explanation.
How about voting and town meeting? Because all the... People think that select board meetings are town meetings.
That's true.
Yeah, I heard somebody say that.
Everybody thinks that until... You have to be really quite infiltrated to know.
Very much confused about what we approve and what we don't approve for the town. And that's voting. We're not residents. We're voting as a select board to maybe move it to a vote. And people get confused about that.
Oh, yeah, just... Yeah, it would be great if we could insert little things, like, pop-ups, like...
Right, and I would just want that to be like a real, sort of, portal and education center for residents.
I would agree.
Voting.
I totally agree.
Yeah. I mean, there's no... I don't have any content, because we have to create it.
We can just copy it from the main municipal.
Yeah.
So, it's like they do a...
Okay.
Oh, Jenna's ongoing projects would be like a nice...
Ah, yeah.
Because also, if we put town everywhere, it's kind of...
Yeah.
Repetitive. It's a waste of...
Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you, yeah. Hopefully she...
Thank you, Jenna.
Um...
Except for town meeting makes sense. Now, to anything else? Now, we would go on to departments, which would be the next top-tier tab.
So, the only... Originally, when they sent me the draft, they removed the Opera House and the Snow Bowl from the departments, because they have external pages and they're more like, you know, they're sort of like...
How do...
No, but people don't... You don't... You have to know that in order to know that.
Right, but I wanted to put it... Like, they put them under residents only, and I wanted to put them...
I see.
Both, because they're a department and they're like an amenity for residents.
Well, would you put under Parks and Rec, would you highlight that includes Snow Bowl?
What's that?
Do people know that Parks and Rec under departments includes Snow Bowl?
No.
It links out to the...
It's there, too. It should just be in multiple places.
You could put Parks and Rec slash Snow Bowl.
Yeah, it links out to the...
It also says elections in town.
Like what Bob said, most people don't understand that Parks and Rec has the Snow Bowl under it. We know that, but I would... If you went and asked people out there, they would not know.
And sometimes I can't remember if it's a under one or if they're equal. Parks and... Also, parks, the difference between parks and rec, because you always think that's the same thing. Then you get to budget time, and there's a page for one and a...
Well, let me ask you this, Audra. The Snow Bowl budget is approved as a separate item.
Yes.
Right, so maybe does that suggest under departments, we have a separate one for Snow Bowl?
Yeah, we should. Just... We should just put it in multiple places. That's the only way.
And we don't have...
Because that's what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would make it a separate line. It's treated separately to some...
It really is, yeah.
Yeah. And we don't have to call it Camden Snow Bowl, but that's to Jenna's point earlier, but...
It was never supposed to be called the Camden Snow Bowl.
Okay.
When they named it, but that was back when other town...
We have, again, to the question that I think...
I think that's how it's generically called.
Is that how it's called? Fine.
Oh, definitely, but it was... That was... They made a huge point of it.
And Camden Opera House, the same way you could say Opera House, but...
Got it.
And those two specific things, I would...
Yeah, I just...
I think Camden needs to be in front of it.
All right. Now, in those department subtabs, what will be an example? What's in each one of those?
Their page.
Got it.
Sorry, I started doing something I shouldn't do.
That's all right. You're trying to do 50 things at once.
And also, some of these departments have a corresponding committee that should then be linked.